And then, sorry, the final speaker will be Kira Redman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, honorable city council members. Thank you for this chance to address you on behalf of the many youths whose future you hold in your hands but are busy in school and work right now and are unable to attend this meeting. Thank you also for your resolution against the Dakota Access Pipeline. On Thanksgiving Day, the day when we were honoring the Indians who fed early undocumented immigrants in a hard winter, the pipeline builders bulldozed through graveyards on land that our government admits was improperly taken from the Sioux. On Sunday, the Army Corps of Engineers denied a permit for energy transfer partners to drill under the river upstream of 18 million people's water. The CEO swore that they will drill anyway without a permit, probably on Christmas Day. We all know how Santa Barbara is about building permits. They're vulnerable to investor pressure if they do not finish the pipeline by January 1st. We ask that you immediately send a copy of your fine resolution with a cover letter to the city's banking service provider, letting them know that our city will consider alignment with our values in the next RFP for banking services. Suggest they divest from DAPL in order to have a chance to continue to hold and invest our money. Edmund Burke famously said, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good people to do nothing." He actually said "good men," but I updated it for him to reflect the prominent role women are playing in improving our governance. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, Chief Lori Lanum, Rebecca Bjork, Renee Brook, and so many other women working to turn our ship of state in a good direction. Carbon emissions are spiking. Climate change deaths have gone from zero in our great-grandparents' time to 400,000 per year now. It is up to local government to bend the trend line from red to green. The difference between any two of these adjoining lines corresponds to millions of human deaths and untold disruption. Twenty-one young people won the right to sue the federal government for knowing what to do about climate change but not doing it. We have an excellent general plan, Climate Action Plan, Bicycle Master Plan, and Food Action Plan, which envision a bright future for my generation and the ones after it. But the sustainable vision of these adopted policies is not where our money is going. This is a sustainable infrastructure we want. Capturing thousands of acre-feet of runoff, potable reuse in drought emergency, sorting our trash better, train and bike ways to make it safe for us young people who don't want to own cars, to bike and walk and be healthy, implementing our adopted sustainability and affordability policies and new zoning ordinance. Instead, what we are inheriting is D-SAL, one gallon of carbon dioxide per gallon of water, 200-million machine at the dump that may or may not be able to unmix leaking batteries, broken glass, plastic from fertilizer, 750-million on widening a freeway to channel thousands of new cars onto surface streets that we already cannot afford to maintain, let alone improve, organizing the 1957 zoning better. Please do not prioritize the desire of people who have most of their lives behind them to live like before over the survival of your children. This world will rapidly become uninhabitable if you continue doing exactly what seemed to work in the past. It is awesome that we have the good policies in place. The DNA is good; it is the RNA that needs updating. It's also awesome that we have a sustainability committee. From the perspective of people who have to live mostly in the future, this committee or dedicated staff should weigh in on the sustainability implications of every decision that council makes. We have every advantage here in Santa Barbara. Please use our privilege responsibly, not to perpetuate the old idea of rich for another few years until the collapse, but work out all the new systems and habits that the world will need for us to thrive going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, Kira Redman.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Mark Chitillo for the Gaviota Coast Conservancy. Anytime we're talking about sustainability, it's always important to focus on the big-ticket items. We want to buy recycled paper and switch out our light bulbs to LEDs, but when it comes to that car purchase, that's where it really makes a difference. That's where the rubber hits the road, and you always do those analyses more carefully. For our city, this decision to enter into a 22-year, $120-million contract is the equivalent of that car decision for many families. And it's our request that you take a pause in your decision-making and that you do inquire and seek additional information and let some of these critical issues sort out over time. There is no need to take an action today, to make a decision today. This is a process that has been going on for many years, and it can continue. And I think some of these stubborn questions may indeed be answered better in the near future. Part of the problem with the project as it is currently proposed to you with its 22-year commitment is that it forecloses many options for sustainable alternatives. And most significantly, it forecloses the ability to move ahead with enhanced source separation. That is the alternative which we encouraged through the environmental review process and which, as you heard from Ms. Leipner, was not given the dignity of consideration in the environmental document. You heard at the last presentation from Mr. Four that the city's diversion rate is 39%. That is, if that's correct, and that may be the true number, there are many jurisdictions reporting 60% to 70% diversion rates. But the reality is that the city of Santa Barbara is at the back of the pack when it comes to jurisdictions that are actually able to separate their waste streams. And source separation is critically important for any solid waste management strategy. So it's our belief that there are better strategies out there, that the EIR is faulty and has avoided giving you the information that you need as responsible civic leaders to make this decision. And as a consequence, not only do you risk our sustainability objectives, but you're also securing yourselves a potentially perilous financial path. It's always, I think, misleading when people talk about how we're going to spend the refunds. The reality is that if the markets are on the direction that they're headed, staff has said that rather than take the 10-year average, we're reducing that by 30% to give a buffer and a safe margin. Well, that's actually where the markets are today. And the markets are in a decline, and as we know, our relations with China are headed for rocky shoals. And it is very likely that we're going to see a substantial reduction in our recycling revenues, which will need to offset our ongoing operations without incurring an additional $122-million debt. That's the problem. We're taking, we are buying the Mercedes-Benz when we really would do just fine with the Chevy Spark. And I think that that's, as you look ahead and looking, and you look at what your economic realities are going to be in the future, with the very steeply increased trash rates that you're asking city residents and others to pay, there is going to be a fairly substantial recoiling to those increased costs. And if we're correct in terms of where the markets are going, both in terms of the bond market with interest rates, which I don't think anybody can deny, interest rates are going up on municipal bonds, and the recycling market, which is currently on a perilous slope downward, we're going to find up, we're going to wind up having to impose additional increases upon our rate payers. And if those rate increases are insufficient, then you're going to have to dip into the general fund. The technical issues are too complicated to get in here, into great detail here, but I will just point out that the San Jose model, which I think everybody has identified as being a comparable for our purposes, is, as evidenced by the answers that staff provided, a different situation. Theirs is not a 22-year contract; theirs is a 15-year contract. They don't have a put-or-pay agreement; they have an exclusive commitment. So they commit that they will send all their waste there. City of Santa Barbara is going to pay even if the future generation of waste is substantially less than they, that staff has projected at this point. So the put-or-pay is substantially different from an exclusive commitment to waste. AB 32 has had a pretty significant impact and is projected in the future to reduce the amount of packaging and the amount of materials that accompany the consumer product that constitute the vast majority of our waste stream. We are going to see less waste in the future, but we're making a bet for 22 years that historical practices are going to be the norm. This is financially a very risky behavior, and it is environmentally a very risky behavior because you are foreclosing the opportunity to promote carbon sequestration through the carbon farming projects that the county is currently in a pilot phase with. Time will give the opportunity for those programs to play out. Time will give the opportunity for enhanced source separation to work out. Time will give us the ability to know what these markets are going to look like and what the real economic cost to your rate payers and our city will be. So we ask that you give us time and not approve this project at this time.
Okay, but you're out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. So it is to the council. Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank Mr. Chitillo for his set of questions during the last hearing and even today, right on point. I'm glad Mr. Four answered them. I'm satisfied with your answers, Mr. Four. We have had ongoing discussions about our waste diversion. When Marbord got the exclusive contract, we talked quite a bit about their services, what they offer, what we do. The city of Santa Barbara, I think, is always working to reduce, reuse, recycle. There's also been a solid waste task force. It's at the regional level; there's been quite a few discussions. I recognize how distasteful it is to have a landfill on the Gaviota Coast. I was a reporter covering the Tahigus landfill, and I learned the word "salwig," right? There's a lot of strange words in solid waste. But when this landfill closes, we will be shipping our discards, our, what we need to bury somewhere else, very far away, probably North County, right? That's been part of the bigger discussion. And we have been talking about it for years. And I do recognize Mr. Ludwig, who's been trying to get us to have our Sustainability Committee meetings at night where more young people can attend. And I will recognize that maybe if that was the case, there would have been more public discussion about what we do with our solid waste and what will we do in terms of our precious landfill space. So I'm ready to move forward, Madam Mayor, just acknowledging that it's not a perfect solution. But thanks, Mr. Chitillo, for representing people who are concerned about, let's do the best thing we can with our trash, and really acknowledge the beauty of the Gaviota Coast and look forward to the day when the landfill is closed and we bring back the biological resources and stop polluting the air, as I recognize those two Class 1 impacts that we aren't, that we can't do anything about. Thank you.
Mr. Hart.
Well, I just, I agree with everything Councilmember Mario said, and I do appreciate Mr. Chitillo's questions. I think they've helped sharpen the discussion and have staff dig harder. And I think the central premise of your point is that, you know, more time will present more opportunities, more technology will advance, we will have options that don't exist today. And that has absolutely happened in the 20 years that this conversation has gone on. And it will, it will happen if we take more time. And we're at, we're at the classic dilemma of when do you do something? And I think this project is significantly better than the status quo. It reduces greenhouse gas emissions; it recycles more material; it allows that material to be used to enrich soils and agricultural operations around the county. So it's, you know, in the good, better, best world, it's probably the best that we have today, but there's something in the future that's going to be better. And so when do we do that? And I think that is fundamentally the dilemma that we have. And after 20 years, that's a long time, you know, that really is. And we're never going to get perfection; we're just going to have to be satisfied with making significant progress. And in my mind, this is significant progress. Ms. Ashley's point about trying to figure out a way to use building materials before they get into, even before they get to Marbord, I guess. I think Habitat for Humanity has a facility out in Galida, Restore Retail Space, that does that exactly. So I don't know what the county staff would say about, you know, assisting that, trying to help, just have more progress in what Ms. Ashley's talking about to make that happen. I think that's a great idea. I'd love to know if they've considered that and are working toward that. Is that part of this in any way that we can add our support for that? Maybe the county staff can ask, can speak to that if they would. But again, I do think, I think this is really good news, other than the fact that it extends the life of Tahigus, and that is just an unfortunate reality of decision that was made many, many, many years ago.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, it is true, we are extending the life of Tahigus, but no matter what we do in the future, we still own what we've put there in the past. So we've got to, at some point in time, generate the fees to close Tahigus and recognize our partnership in creating that landfill. But this is a good step forward. The technology is not super high-tech, but it is the kind of stuff that we went up, I went with Mr. White and Mr. Four to Gilroy, beautiful downtown Gilroy, and this is where we got this good stuff. And watch what they do up there and watch how they do it. And of course, we don't have the kind of acreage to spread out and do the windrows and huge windrows of compost that they do. So this AD facility that we're going to put together with Mustang is going to make a nice, compact way to deal with our agency and our partners in terms of the trash we do produce. We are in a throwaway generation. In my childhood, we fixed things, and now we don't. We throw away, we try to recycle. None of that has a great carbon footprint. Source separation is great, but it's really expensive. And the thing that we do that costs us the most are these individual routes to pick up each source-separated product. So it's a, there's a mix here. And I think staff, both county and city, have done a fabulous job of trying to put together the best combination of those things. And even though sometimes I'm sure that Mr. Four, Mr. Smart are a real pain in the county side, I think they helped make a much better project out of this for our entire partnership regionally. So I would like to forward kudos to our staff, by the way. I think they did a fabulous job in that. And I think that this Tahigus improvement that we're doing now is going to afford us the time, what Mr. Chitillo was talking about, to advance the technologies that we're going to need going forward because we just can't keep building landfills and infinitem. But at some point in time, we'll be developing the techniques, whether it's, you know, plasma technology or whatever it takes to diminish our wasteload, or God help us, we might go back to the '50s and build stuff we can fix again. But, thank you.
Mr. Dominguez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have several concerns about this project, and I'm not going to be able to support it today. I think there's a good chance if we had a few revisions and some minor tweaks, I could support it in the very near future. My first concern is the cost containment. Some of the comments that were made refer to that, so I won't go back into too much detail, but the instability in the price of recycling, the nature of the technology not necessarily having been applied in a situation like ours here in Santa Barbara County. I'm concerned about the commitment for 20 years to this plan and not being able to seek out better technology. We'd be locked in. This is not a plan that transitions us into any other technology or into stewardship. I'm concerned, when I look at the EIR, the, it talks about the stewardship program, and apparently the county passed a resolution in 2011 encouraging stewardship, but it's, we're now five years later and nothing's been done countywide or citywide to really push that forward. I'm glad that Mr. Four pointed out that the city took a better look at it or took another look at it and went into more detail. I'm really glad to hear that. And overall, the presentations I've had from staff have been amazing, really detailed. I also spent some time over at the county and talked to some of their staff, and everyone's been over backwards answering questions on what is a very complicated project with a lot of new technology. But I am ultimately disappointed that we didn't start working on more alternatives sooner, and I'm worried that we're going to be locked into this for 20 years. I'm not satisfied with the lack of a study on the compost. You know, we have it here in front of us, and it looks fine; it doesn't smell too bad. But we haven't had an actual scientific study where a laboratory looks at it. And, you know, it is certainly compelling that lots of people are buying it in the Bay Area, but lots of people buy lots of stuff for not necessarily the best reason. So I'm not going to let the market demand for it now be compelling because who knows what, you know, at 8:00 tomorrow morning, that market can be. It can be a non-market. So that's nothing that we have in our contract that protects us if people realize there's a problem with it and stop buying it, particularly in our situation where we have a large agricultural component in our county. And if that market deems it's not suitable for their use, it could create a problem. There are other parts of the EIR that I'm not particularly satisfied with in terms of their examination of the mitigation. The, where it talks about gasification, let me just turn to it real quick. While gasification presents many possible benefits, the concerns are the newness of this type of technology. Again, that's, that's not a concern of mine. It's certainly new technology, but they're using it in Europe and other parts of the world, so there's enough science out there that we can look at that. I think new is good. We want to be examining the newest technologies. We don't want to be foregoing options, especially if we're going to lock in for 20 years. I know they're using it in Sweden, which is one of the most environmentally progressive countries in the world. The process proposed by the state to evaluate the technology, again, it's up to us to kick the state in the rear and get them to evaluate technology that the rest of the world is using with success. We have a situation now where one party has super majorities in both houses, so they can hopefully push things through that are to the benefit of the residents of California. So the other thing it says is, and the public's current opposition to this type of technology, I can't believe they're saying we're not using gasification because the public's opposed to it. I'm pretty sure 90% of the public has no idea what gasification is. So that's, those are my concerns with the EIR. Thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this obviously is a great, big commitment, great, it's one of the most important decisions that this council has to, has to make in my time here. And as I've, and I've participated in the subcommittees on this project now for some five years. And my concerns focused on three areas: the finances, the technology, and the Tahigus itself, the Gaviota Coast, and the impacts on the Gaviota Coast. And I have to say that the, our staff has drilled down and I think has really done a superb job of engaging with the county to improve the finances of this project. It's, there are a lot of moving parts and a lot of loose ends, and I think that a variety of them have been, have been raised today, where even now, interest rates and cost of reclaimed material are two that, for example, which are, remain concerns. However, I do think that the finances, is an area, the financial orientation of this project is one that I think could be supported. Technology, I had the privilege of going up to Gilroy and at least seeing a piece of the puzzle. I thought I was going to be looking at the anti-aerobic digester, which I did not see, but we did at least see the compost facility, and that is impressive. It shows not only what the tech, a piece of what the technology can do, but how a real, a professional operation can, can manage a serious amount of waste. And then comes Tahigus, the Gaviota Coast. I still have not been able to get over that obstacle. Do we invest $100 million in the industrialization, further industrialization of the Gaviota Coast? I just haven't been able to get there. I just think there are ways that chunks of this can be done closer to the source, to, we're generating this material and we need to take care of it closer to home. And so that's, that is the place, this is, the Gaviota Coast, to many of us, is one of the great open-space ecological resources in the world. And one of our jobs as citizens here is to be good stewards of it. So it's that, and once we spend, invest that, we get to the end of those 20 years, how are we going to walk away from a $100-million operation? I don't see us doing that. So it's that piece that forestalls me from being able to support this project today. I think that a lot of good work's gone into it, but that's just, that's a place where I won't be able to go.
Mr. Hart.
I just had a question. Councilmember Dominguez said that this hadn't been scientifically analyzed, and I believe it had. Could staff answer that question?
It has been. We, I would, I think I'll call on Mr. Dewey to follow up with my comments, but, but our understanding is that Mr. Dewey has taken independent analyses of similar digestate and the compost, resulting compost from San Jose. It has passed all of the state standards related to metals, pathogens, and inert contaminants, even meeting the new California land-spreading standard. And so that's, that's what I know, and I think Mr. Dewey wants to fill in any other analytical information.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Hart, John Dewey, MSB Mustang. Not only did Mustang test this material, it comes from the Gilroy facility, but Z-Bass composting is required by state law and also by their customers to test it on a monthly basis. So they send it on a regular basis to a compost lab. U.S. Composting Council sets out a suite of testing standards that looks at heavy metals, the carbon ratio, all the inert contaminants such as glass. And it's consistently passed all those laboratory analysis over the last five years that have been doing this material. So it is very viable and valuable material. It's being land-applied over a couple thousand acres around Monterey County. So it has passed all lab analysis.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez.
I must, I must have misunderstood your comments at the last session you were at. So do we have copies of those lab results? Maybe that's what I was misunderstanding, that you wouldn't release them to us or that they weren't?
No. Madam Mayor, Councilman Dominguez, I've provided all those laboratory analysis to Mr. Four. He could probably forward them to, if you like.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be glad to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other lights on. I'll, I'll speak. First off, I want to thank staff for really looking at this with a very fine-tooth comb as being part of the ad hoc committee. Every possible permeation of everything but the crystal ball that we, you've been able to review and negotiate. And I, and I know that the county is anxious to move forward with this, and they were probably wondering why we were doing all this and not other partners involved, but, you know, I think you have done what we have asked you to do, which is the very best possible arrangement, given the long-term lease and the unknowns that could happen over 22 years. So I want to thank you for that. I know you put a lot of work into that. Here's where, here's where I come down at the end, and I have to agree with Mr. White. I, I've thought about this long and hard. There's a lot of good that comes out of parts of this process, but I go back to the initial proposal when Supervisor Gail Marshall, back in 2000, went back to Germany and said, "We need to figure out a way to expand the life of Tahigus, but in order to close it correctly and to not further look at industrialization of the Gaviota Coast, to try to find a way to close the facility." And I know that that has been of great concern to all of us up here. But I look at, I look at the timeline, and this is a 40-year, this facility will have a 40-year lifespan, and it'll be situated at Tahigus. And come 2038 or 2037, the year before, the new permitted capacity date will come around, this facility will be paid for by then in 20 years and still have 20 years of life associated with it. And it'll basically take three supervisors, whomever they will be by that year, to say, "You know what? Let's continue on using this facility for another 20 years." I mean, that is, that is a real possibility. And so now, the decisions we're making today can help set the stage of keeping that facility going up to 2059, which I don't think was what any of us really wanted to do. I do think the alternative locations were looked at to some level, not to the level that... that they could have been, given, I know there was some resistance to certain areas for certain reasons, but if, if the thought of, "We have to really figure out, how can we make sure to protect the Gaviota Coast and not industrialize it?", I don't know if those conversations would have changed. And I know that's not what the county wants to hear. You've put a lot of effort and time and energy into this, and I appreciate that, but when it comes to over a lot of what has been said, that is where I stand, right here. So Mr. Hotchkiss, you can comment or not, but that, that will have a, but we do need a motion.
Well, I'd make the motion that this go forward. Because I think it's the best alternative. It's not perfect. Nobody said it is. It's a human endeavor and it's never going to be perfect, but it, rather than truck stuff miles and miles away when we no longer will take care of it ourselves, even though we don't like it, it's in our backyard, that's where it is. We're producing it, so we ought to be responsible for it. This is a responsible way to take care of it. I appreciate very much the thorough way in which you replied to Mr. Chitilo's letter. It demonstrated a real knowledge of statewide possibilities and thorough investigation that nevertheless brought it back to us and made the recommendations that you did that I would support and now recommend we pass.
Okay, so it's a motion for the staff recommendations?
Second.
Is that what, yes? Okay, so it's a motion by Hotchkiss, second by Rouse. Mr. Dominguez, did you have something else? No? Okay. So we'll have a split vote if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Dominguez? Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Yes.
Mayor Proton White?
No.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Hart?
Aye.
Councilmember Murillo?
Aye.
And Mayor Schneider?
No. So that passes for three with Dominguez, White, and Schneider opposed. Okay, that was a big item, so thank you. I need, I've been drinking so much tea, I need a five-minute break. So we'll take about a five-minute break and get back with item number 17. Thanks.
There's the potential, I think, for City of Santa Barbara staff to light the way to sustainable water use for the rest of California and the world, just putting their wind in their sails to do it. The prohibition of ornamental turf watering would be an excellent step. I think the ultimate aim should be a permanent culture shift away from ornamental lawn, as was accomplished by Marin County in the 1977 drought. This article here on brown being the new green is actually not from Marin, it's from England. People are having second thoughts about the appropriateness of green turf in England. It's a sure sign that we should get over it here. Ornamental turf areas are water liabilities of the first order. Reconfiguring these areas is stormwater infiltration basins with native plants and fruit trees would transform them into water assets. Citywide, these are approximate numbers, it's about 1,500 acre feet of water liability that could be transformed to 3,000 acre feet of water asset. These terraces at our house on San Marcos Pass, last year, in the middle of the drought, we infiltrated 67,000 gallons of water in one storm. That's on a quarter-acre lot. You can see the video of it on our Oasis Design YouTube channel. It has a whole bunch of info on the, you know, the quantities, the quantitative analysis of what happened there, which is something I look forward to working on more with the city. Let's see, the upside of drought is promoting a shift towards better water management. California drought is most acute in Santa Barbara. And this year, logically, we would all be in, be all the way in the forefront of developing best practices. As I mentioned previously, however, LA is actually in front of us. I shared this slide before. This is the water cushion that we'd have now with an ornamental turf ban, about 5,400 acre feet in Lake Kachuma, if we'd banned ornamental turf at the start of the drought. And that's water that's costing us tens of millions to replace now. One question is where this water would be stored from the infiltration I mentioned. In the production, the part of Santa Barbara that's above Foothill Road, infiltration would go into our production basins, the middle and lower basin that we already have wells in, and it would help, among other things, flush saltwater out if we have saltwater intrusion, as we're prepared to do now to get through the drought. It would have a quicker recovery time. Instead of 20 years, it would be faster. And there's also an uppermost basin, the one that's used by the well, wells in the Presidio and the EDC yard, and there's a few people on the west side. The water's only a few tens of feet down in Santa Barbara, 20, 30, 40 feet, and that's currently not being managed at all, and there's a potential two or so Gibraltar reservoirs worth capacity of, of storage there. And then finally, in the shallow, sort of top four feet of the root zone, there's about a Gibraltar worth of storage just in the soil sponge between the wilt point and the field capacity. That's also not something that we've looked at optimizing the management of. I think that's my last slide here. So costs of, let's see, what was I going to say here? Sorry, I was working on this while we were talking. Oh, here we go. So, let's see. One suggestion I had was to consider replacing the ornamental lawn at City College with climate-appropriate landscaping. There's the idea that this is watered with reclaimed water, but as was mentioned, there's been a lot of blending, and I believe the reclaimed waters, pipes are currently down. Is that correct?
No, it's back online.
Okay. So beyond that, their main cost is just the opportunity cost of having all these young minds surrounded by sterile turf, where there could be a living landscape laboratory for the Department of Integrated Design that's now at Santa Barbara City College. And then a final note, I would strongly encourage the council to consider increasing the use charges for water to make up that deficit that was just mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And that's unanimous? Thank you very much. Okay, item 18, please.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, I commend this thinking. I think making renewable energy generation capacity equal to the consumption of the desal plant is a great idea. That is provided, it does not distract from, from reducing the use of power in the reduce, reuse, recycle, that comes first. I think it's incumbent on the city to send a clear message in this regard so that the math and science is not obscured by the qualitative idea that the carbon is offset, so it's okay to waste this water, which in turn wastes energy. This graph shows the energy intensiveness of different water supplies. Our water supply in average years is a mix of local surface water and local groundwater, so it's down in this zone. Desalination is way up here, it's about 30 times our average amount. The numbers indicate that the use of desal water for ornamental turf, for example, would be a climate offense in the first degree. I would suggest that whenever the water supply is tight enough, that it requires that the desal plant be operating, that a turf watering ban be in effect concurrently, regardless of any carbon offset that's in place. Even if 100% of the energy came from renewables, it would still be a higher use of this energy to use it for something else, other than pumping the salt out of water for the use of decorative grass. If the desal plant is idle, that eliminates 100% of its greenhouse gas production. Thanks.
Thank you.